It's coming Tuesday to do in Monticello. The morgue in Monticello was full. So she was able to reach out to, to one dreamer home that was able to take the bodies at a little higher cost than normal.
She called me yesterday. Explained the situation to me. She's still driving a van that's full of bone. And I believe it's on the table for the next. Yeah, or maybe that. Um, we're still not, not, not a place to store the trailer. If we had the trailer. It's too tall to put in, I remember, too tall to put in this space down here, but like.
Oh, he's never been in those spaces. It's like, it's, if I imagined it correctly, I think it's like eighteen foot at the peak.
The trailer is eighteen foot long?
At the peak.
Wow. Eighteen feet high?
Yes, that's high. That's a big one.
That's higher than what's legal. Now, that's way over legal height. How's that work? Sure. How the trailer eighteen feet tall?
Pick your roads safely.
Go under Harley and, would that fit under the, um, the heartland down here?
It would fit under the heartland. It wouldn't fit underneath the bridge going up the hill. That's only thirty.
I mean, it's, it's high. I, I'll probably, I'll have to go re-measure again, because I'm trying. I was trying to use the laser.
Well, I remember years ago, I drove a semi that had thirteen ten dollar, and I had to be awfully careful.
And that's why, I kind of said earlier, when, um, on the office, on the corner, in the courthouse, because we decided to do the Camden property. I mean, I will say a lot of. I mean, she won't come in here during off hours. She'll have room office out there.
And I'll get, I'll get the trailer re-measured in that, but it, it's.
I mean, right now, we got that big beautiful truck that was donated, just sitting outside in a pot, in a lot that when we get all this rain, may not move out of it, because it's too small.
What's the truck for?
My emergency response truck is gonna be used for multiple. I can set it up for hazmat, mascal, life support. But I don't want to invest in the equipment to put in that trailer, in that truck, and it's sitting outside.
Well, Warren? I think Steve's expecting, he's still interested.
Well, I think, yeah, I think we've got a lot of things going there.
That's the issue, though.
Definitely.
We got the jail issue and.
The nine where the meat definitely.
I mean, there's a jail there as far as.
But it does give us.
I mean, the Camden could do that. One of the interesting uses, they had a bunch for other things. I know we haven't had our meeting with them yet. That's an improvement right there. I mean, they might go use it for the roads and falls. That's two hundred and forty. I'm not sure what the land was at.
Eight hundred?
He's, he's down to with, he sold two acres off to the, the guy that was renting the spot in the northern. He will split out the eight acres of total.
The next thing we need is the office building and the drive south.
And warehouse.
The warehouse.
But if you're, you're gonna consider looking at the, the cost of a new tower and going into our own tower. You know?
You would have one.
That eight acres, maybe. The spot to do it. I don't know. I mean, I just.
Would that be a good spot for towers?
Well, I'm not a surveyor, so, but. You get it up to the right heights. We get it to the right heights, I think we should be pretty good.
I guess it's under the county, I guess.
So, it, it just, I'm not trying to pressure anybody. I just. I'm, I'm trying to.
Make.
I've got a witness.
Yeah, you know.
You know, you, you gave me permission to go after the grants season that's coming up, you know, and if I do get some equipment out of the, if it is awarded. Where am I gonna put it? You know, so it's. I mean, I'll still apply for it, but I don't want money, money, you know, grants setting up, you know.
Tom and Ange?
What would the cost be to rebuild that building to make it usable?
I don't know for sure, but we'd have to do a game. Any of you with more expertise, I could jump in on this, but I know we would have to build in a morgue in it, which would be, have to have water, would have to have, you know, heat, air conditioning, cooler, uh, dissection table, a load table.
Unless if we decide to do autopsies.
Yeah, if you wanted to bring the autopsies here, you would have to have that. If you, um, if you phase, phase it in, the initial thing you would have to have is we have to have an extra security inside. And then a backup generator on the.
Is the building in Flora for fifty thousand? Has heat, electric, all that?
I know, and I, I, I like that, although if that trailer is eighteen feet tall.
Well, even if it's thirteen foot, I, you know, scrap what I said on the height, because obviously I'm right. But it's tall.
It's not gonna fit in an eight foot.
No, it's not gonna fit in ten foot. Because I, it's, it was at least three foot over most travel trailer.
And at the time, also, you need space to store some stuff and what area he's not using at the time before he gets it all developed and gets the grants. Paul can store stuff in that building over there to keep it out of the way.
Yeah, we can store it.
I would do it.
Off-season or whatever.
Right.
I personally am very concerned. The price of five hundred thousand plus floor and the price of maintenance, lawn care, all those kind of things that would go with this additional property. On top of what we're already asking the our taxpayers to pay towards a jail. And I know that our proposed clause, which I will, I was gonna work out, our proposed clause of fifteen million. Very negligible compared to what other counties around are doing. I think it's Warren County's putting in fifteen million dollar highway project. And.
White County's constructing it.
Fifteen million dollar, yeah, there was another one. And Roswell School just put a twenty million dollar expansion onto their school. I mean, these numbers seem astronomical to me, just a low home from a couple of them. They just seem way out of line, but I notice these are the type of projects that are being done. But we have kind of said to our people, we're gonna build a a jail here, and it's gonna be the biggest investment this county's made in a long time. And I just, I personally question whether it's true to jump on board and buy another piece of property a second time. As much as I walk in that warehouse out there in Camden and look at it, so this this is incredible. And those are the offices. So. I guess your question to us is, is there any movement at all towards this? And I would have to refer to my two colleagues here. Is there?
Well, I think there shouldn't be, because we didn't get moved up years ago to jail. So maybe we sat and wait. Will they ever have it or?
And all the stuff they.
I mean.
Probably need some.
What can you do? What can you do if we do have something come up in our counties? What can you do?
Right now, I'm, I'm completely dependent on every surrounding county to come and support us. Which is part of a mutual aid agreement. If we have a major disaster, just in our county alone, the district would come and support. The odds of a major flood happening just in Carroll County, it's not. It's White County, it's Tepi Canoe County, it's Cass County. That flood, because we've got the same river. Is gonna happen to multiple counties. So now, things are getting stretched thin, you know, um.
Well, let me ask you this.
The tornado outbreak, you know, several years ago hit several counties. There wasn't a whole lot of support there, because the EMAs are dealing with their county issues.
The other counties will also get assistance to the EMA, and it's just Mike. Um, to me, Mike, he got his hands tied, because he's wanting to do great things for our county, and I think it'll make us more compliant where we get more state funding, if that's my understanding. Even better off we are locally, we can get more money back.
There's opportunities.
There's opportunities. It's not a guarantee, not a simple guarantee, except for paying back.
The question I have for you.
Yes, sir.
We have talked about it in the event of a disaster, using, say, uh, Delphi High School, this is where I went to the last meeting, as a area where we set up a disaster relief center.
A pot.
Or.
Are you talking like for a health disaster or?
Yeah.
So, or a health disaster?
Whatever the disaster is.
Right.
That vast warehouse out there.
I could convert it if I had the facilities to do it. When we talked about, the perfect example is when you, you guys approved the five thousand dollars for Burlington, and then the council approved it to assist in paying for the backup generator, going to the building, the community center. They have showers, they have a kitchen, they have the benefit of the medical kitchen at the bottom of the community center. If we have a disaster, I can get the Red Cross in here to do the sheltering, and we have a place for people to receive medical care. We have a place for people to eat. We have, you know, if they have to have a place to stay, we got short-term sheltering for them at those locations.
At Burlington?
At Burlington. We could do the same at Camden. We could do the.
It's really not.
It's just not for just one thing. And I think two or three meetings ago, you guys asked me to come up with like a, hey, this is not doing everything in one shot. If you decided to go this way, what would be a five-year, six-year plan? And I did that, and I emailed it to you all. Um, back in December, I think December or January, whenever, like. There's options to it. You know, you, you can take a portion of that, and if you want me to get into it, I can't. You can take a portion of it three years down the road and build a conference room to where we could host uh, EMS training for the paramedics and the EMTs. That course is eight weeks, ten weeks, though? It's, it's a long period of time.
Four months.
So, four months. Will it bring millions of dollars into our county? No, but it'll bring first responders from other counties here to get to the training. And when those first responders are here, they're gonna eat in our restaurants. They're gonna visit our gas station during the day. And we can do, we can do the same thing for the law enforcement. We can do the same thing for nine-one-one. We can do. I mean, there's tons of things that can happen and bring a little bit of money in, but it, it starts showing off Carroll County. A little bit. And it's a thought. I just, I just need to know whether I'm, I need to just stay in the basement and not try and go after these grants or, you know.
What's the opinion of people out here? Do they have any advice for us?
Yes, sir. I've been in the fire service for sixteen years, and Mike, and what, what you have at the county is nothing short of fantastic, as far as what efforts they put into what they do. And they can't do it unless they have facilities to do it. It's an animal we're, we're, we have to have a corner. We have emergencies every single day that my department and the other departments in the county go to. If he has a building where he can put all this into, into one thing, the opportunities are endless. Tepi County has a fantastic setup, but they have a lot of storage. So what he's trying to do is, is a great opportunity. So being a first responder, I think what he's doing is great.
To me, what I have to rationalize here at work on is, how do I best support first responders and all the emergency things, and yet stay within a budget that we do not have, like Tepi Canoe County has? We can't compare ourselves all the time to Tepi Canoe County, because we're hawkers compared to them.
And I, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not even trying to get that level. That is, they are so far beyond me.
Basically, what we definitely want is the grants.
Okay, well, everybody is, yes.
Do you have the money to buy it? What's your budget like without raising taxes?
That's something we'd have to look at.
But I, I think we're right in there. We, we, yes, here's, here's, who can tell us?
Yeah, I would, I would like to follow up on, on what Dave just said. The, I would really urge you guys to finish the capital improvement plan, because the county does, is in a pretty good fiscal position at this point. But, uh, you know, big moving pieces like the jail going from fourteen million to sixteen million, and some of these other things that are being discussed, eat up a great deal of capital and liquidity, uh, on, you know, looking over the next five years. So, um, do we have the money to go write a check for it? Yeah, probably. But does that mean that we're, we're gonna be in a good position five years from now with all of our other obligations? We don't know, because that capital improvement plan's not completed at this time. So. Uh, I would love to set a joint session with you to complete that.
I can't think of a single reason you should.
Is that the only building that's available in Carroll County? Why Camden? I mean, you got the Peter's Revington sitting there. You've got where the old Delphi products moved from. Why, why are we specifically, and the lease options are there for those buildings? You know?
I think Peter Revington's building's all been.
I'm sorry, Steve, you're kidding me?
I think Peter Revington's all been, new businesses are in there. There's like three or four businesses in that.
Yeah.
And the old blue valve is in there.
I mean, I drive around and see all these empty buildings, and I'm sure, I mean, it's pretty over there in Camden. Don't get me wrong, but.
The reason we're looking at Camden, sir, is for trying to centralize the assets in the county. And by Camden, Flora, Office seventy-five, two eighteen is centralized in the county. Uh, part of the thing that you wanna look at for emergency management when you're getting to response, and if I was looking to receive state assets coming in, I need to be on a, a major road, but not one like the Hoosier Heartland. So seventy-five is maintained by NDOT. It's clear, you know, two eighteen is just recently paved. It's a, it's a state road. It doesn't get a whole ton of traffic. So that's why I'm looking at that. And I've looked at some facilities here in Delphi that, um, pretty, a lot of times they come up and they're gone. Real quick. Or they don't have, uh, you know, one, one problem that you have here in Delphi is if you get north and west of it, you got the tracks. So you can get hung up by railroad. And my response, yeah, I got a little bit more playtime in it. But you still wanna be able to get there within a decent amount of time and not get railroaded by, so that's, that's why I'm looking at it. I'll look at any property, anywhere. But.
Have you looked at the one out here where they used to be Delphi? Next to where they had the Dairy Queen offices?
I was told that there, there was another company moving in there.
Maybe it is. I don't know.
And that. So I did look at that one time, and I was told it was sold.
A year ago, I drove around it, looked in the tracks, and, you know, looked at everything, and I was gonna see there was a lot of buildings there.
But there's no room if we have to build a power. If, you know what I'm saying? There's, there's a ten-foot tower there.
Well, you couldn't put a tower there, because it's down the hole, right?
You had to just build it extremely tall.
Just a follow-up question. You know, we talked about the jail project, but the city, people in this city have also got the water project that's put a crunch on our budget. So let's not forget about that. I know the sheriff's sitting right behind me. God bless him. He needs it.
Yeah. I, I think that's an excellent point, you know.
Well, see, that's even gonna affect us, because we're gonna be on the city water out there even further out.
Right.
I mean, we're already on the city water now, which raises the water. I don't remember what they're raising it to.
Does it lumber? Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna piggyback on Josh's comment. I think you guys with the council need to look at what you got in the budget, where you can afford it or not, and what's coming on down the line. One thing you might wanna consider is your Delphi School Corporation's gonna raise their taxes on every individual that pays taxes here, like twenty cents or that, because they're broke. So you gotta look at all of those combinations, whether it's Carroll, Delphi, City Water, whatever it is. You guys with the council need to meet and see if you got the money to purchase anything in what goes five years down the road here.
No, I agree. I do too, and we don't, but we don't need to limit ourselves to Carroll and Delphi. We've got two townships that have to look at paying taxes in the Twin Lakes, and we have one township that has to pay the Russell, and all those are our people that have to. Huh?
You got several people outside of Delphi schools.
Yeah.
We don't always tax on anybody.
I don't. Okay, so, the gist of, uh, two things. Warren made a real hip of them when he said, you know, you didn't do the jail five years ago, or ten years ago, or whatever, and, and that's true. I can see in the future where, when we say, well, okay, now, or whoever's sitting in these seats, boy, it's time to build a facility like that, and it costs us a million rather than five hundred thousand. Of course, that'd be a finished building, two, two million, whatever. So maybe it's prudent to look ahead like that and say, here it is, that's something to look at. And but I think Josh's point is, is excellent too, that before we can really say. Yeah, let's do, we need to have a capital improvement plan. We need to, we need, we need to finish that, be able to say, okay, here's what we could potentially pay, but is it wise to even think of it? And if it's wise to think of it, does that mean at the same time, we're gonna lay that onto our taxpayers? That's, that's the second step. It's not only can we pay, but do we want our taxpayers to pay?
There's a lot of options there, but they're good to consider.
So. Again, we're gonna bypass your question and try to set a date with the council to get a capital improvement plan, you know, to get it. We may miss it.
I, I wasn't asking for a, I just wanted, if I need to worry about it or just.
I want to just go ahead and worry about it for a while.
I'll just keep asking about that. Not a big deal. Because I've already sent you guys everything I know on it, so.
Sure.
Last thing, this isn't in the agenda, and I'm not really sure how I wanna approach it, but I sent you guys an email last week regarding the fish kill, and some issues that came up. So I think because it deals with a personnel issue, that we have, that needs to be an executive session instead of being discussed in open meetings. That's why I CC'd you on it.
Yeah, I, I don't know about that, executive session, but I, I think it involves the job descriptions of you. The job descriptions, and I think you all got the same. I think we need to look at the job descriptions. I'm not sure that an EMA director or an EMA does even have any responsibility, or for that matter, health department, to respond to a state environmental emergency. And that's, that's one thing that, I, I know that local jurisdictions get drawn into a state environmental situation. Given the impacts the local community, but if it's strictly a, something that's under the jurisdiction by them, I am not sure that we have.
But should we not have a county face on any major incident that ha, or any incident that happens that's bringing state in and using?
I'm, I'm sorry, sorry.
Should we have a, a county face? Should there be a county representative there? We're the ones that know the county.
Right.
And so, if it's, I'm just, I've.
Yeah. It depends on the emergency. I didn't see the, the local connection and just what, what I read on the. So, but I think we do need to circle around and look at the job descriptions, and we also need to look at the Indiana, the, the Indiana administrative code, see what, if any, responsibility. Because you're not a subordinate jurisdiction.
No.
Of the, I, I, I think you will probably, you're probably drawn into it by the state. And I am not certain that unless it affects drinking water, that even local health and so forth is even involved. So. It depends on the emergency. There needs to be a policy if there isn't, and there probably isn't a policy if there's not a regulation that controls this at some well, even if you're a department environment management, home security, whatever. There may be something already on the books about this, so. I, I don't have enough information, and I don't think the board has enough information to give you an answer. But I think you also, the board needs to protect their employees from, and the budget from having employees drawn into things that don't have a local impact that are a state, a state issue. Do you see what I'm saying? I mean, there's.
They, it's the local issue that's causing the state problem. For, if, you're in, if the waterways are DNRs and IEDM's issue. The waterway does not just become contaminated of what, and we don't know what it is. We have to wait for the water samples to come back. But whatever happened on county property, or land owned by people of the county is, is what has infected that stream. So it does involve the county, unless I'm incorrect. So we should, there, there should be a county face.
Well, there, it needs to be in the job description. If it's not in the job description, then it should.
It's written in a job description that they would respond to.
It is, okay. So.
But it's, they've also been told by their supervisor they will not do.
Ange?
I just wanna respond to this, and maybe we're talking about. I am only allowed to do what my board and my boss tells me that I can do.
And that's what I.
And, I know, I know, Mike, I'm just, I want to clarify this whole situation. I met with my boss on Wednesday morning. I told him the situation. I told him that we had contaminated water. Nobody knew what it was contaminated with. They thought it might have come from a CAFO. They didn't know. Okay, CAFO immediately says to me, IEDM and DNR, not local health department. I've been told time and time again. I do not, the only thing I have to do with the CAFO is if they have a restroom in their facility. If IEDM goes out and DNR goes out and checks the stream, if I get a call that a stream is contaminated, the first thing I do is call IEDM and DNR. They go out and check, they take water samples and check the water to try to figure out what it is. I called IEDM, I called DNR, I asked them what they found out. They told me they had no idea what was causing, causing the fish kill. Okay. So back up. Everybody thinks I didn't respond to this. I did go out. I did, I did check to see what I could find. Only thing I can check for is if it's a septic problem. If, and, and that was what I was trying to find out. I couldn't trace it back to where, where the problem came from, any better than IEDM and DNR did. But the bottom line was, my boss told me Wednesday morning, I could not go out. So I'm gonna go by the guy that pays me. I'm gonna go by the guy that is my supervisor. I can't, I can't do any more than what I'm allowed to do.
Well, I know. I do, someone's to handle this area.
Well, so we can do it, yeah?
No, there is, and we're, Dave, we are running water, IEDM and them are running the water samples and down in Indy, and it's gonna probably take thirty days.
I have no idea why it would take that long. I, you can go to the lab and have them done.
Well, it's not, it's not very important, but anyways, there is a, a lot of it killed. I mean, we can be concerned about that. If somebody is under suspicion in there, they pull something out. I mean, I don't know. Animals that, you know. I don't know. Sorry.
So I, I just feel if it's, if there's an issue within the county, that there should be a county representation there. I might be way off base. But that's my personal opinion, that's, and that's my work ethic. I'll. You know, when I was responding to maneuver skills, and that, and we talked about it in open, and it's not in my job description, and we had to figure out whose it was, but I would continue to respond until we get it figured out. You know, so I. You know, so I, you guys, I work for you guys, and I work for the citizens of Delphi County. So basically, I need to know what the citizens want me to do and what you guys want me to do.
I think that's a reasonable question, because it's a big. Word up to me, I would like to be able to have one rule, and us establish all the rules that have to do with these type of things. And have the people of Carroll County control Carroll County as much as possible. But of course, the state of Indiana doesn't see it that way. And we have no jurisdiction over that creek that I don't know. I mean, if there's.
I understand that, I'm just, but there should still be.
If the wildcat runner was said this deep down the top of there, as I remember as a kid, it used to.
It used. Uh. And it's still hiding PCVs, but that's coming out of Hell County.
Right.
But that's not.
Uh, the old pits over there, but the state says that's not us to determine. I mean, they make the rules about the waters of Carroll County. So my question would be a follow-up of Ted's is, how much do we want as a people back to money? To pay to give into things that we have no jurisdiction over and no control over? On the surface, it seems like it's more than that. It's nice for us to have eyes out there. So we look at, we don't.
But, you know, the state agencies, and I understand what you're saying, so that the state agencies would, would like to have county representation on there.
There's a difference there, okay? If the state agency is calling us and saying, can you send local people out? We have jurisdiction, but we want your input.
I see it as a partnership, and I'm probably looking at it including your own. Or partners with them in, in this sector.
Very similar, have I found where we have a partnership with the state. Every time we come into any type of relationship with them, they're the superior, we're the inferior, we don't really have much of a partnership. And I feel good to think about it in terms of that.
I've never had that feeling when the guys I work with.
I had this personally, last year.
Yes. And, and the first.
I worked with them, they were into me, and they.
And they, the first, they called me and told me they were on the way to the county.
Yep, and they took care of it, and they did what they're supposed to need to do, and they never came back, so.
I think we just need to look at the job description and see who's actually in charge, cause I got a copy of one of them, one of them says.
I got a copy of both of them.
One of them says it's supposed to be a twenty-four hour service on call, you're supposed to respond to all spills.
Wait, wait, wait. Who is supposed to?
Uh, Mark, come on, I, I.
His job description says he's on a twenty-four hour call and all that, but.
Environmental Health Specialist. That's right there, investigates various spills and discharges in the ground, in our bodies of water, sort of closely with the Department of Environmental, I.D.M. On the complaints and orders and complaints, investigates complaints, animals, waste, land applications, and contacts I.D.M. on, on problems, which she says she does. But also, if, if her boss does not want her to do that.
Right.
We need to talk to his boss or her boss and say, hey, what do you want her to do? Or that individual to do, then we need to do the job description to fit the job. I think that's the big issue.
Can I say something simply?
Yes, clear.
That whole paragraph was written in there about the waterways, because when Megan had my job, she wanted to do a, a project called River Watch. And what that did, and honest to God, I'm not making this stuff up, is she went out in the streams and collected rocks, and determined what kind of rocks were in the river. So when I came on, I said, what good does that do? How is that health-related? And Dr. Dutter said, I don't see anything or any reason to continue doing this. I mean, she would be gone two days a week collecting rocks in the river. Why?
I think we just need to go back to the job description.
Well, then, job should, job description should have been changed then.
Right.
And, and nobody should have signed off on it. If you take a job, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm just hearing this for the first time. If she signed it, did you sign your job description?
Yes, I did.
And if he located it, so that's, that's why it's hard of what she's supposed to be doing. And I, I think he's saying, I mean, I'm just talking about the HR department now.
True.
And, um.
But in Delphi.
That's what job descriptions, we, that's what happens, is the department head approves it first, and then when he offers the job, and then when they sign it, they're stating they're doing that also. So actually, it should have been, and it was probably approved by the commissioners and the council also, so there's a lot of steps into that.
But when I got into it and found out what it, what it meant as far as the River Watch thing, I just think it was worthwhile to do, and neither did he, and neither did the board, so.
Well, the, the point, I think the answer's important, and there is neither the board, because the fact that you signed it and said, I'll do it, that means you've agreed to it, but the, the, the problem comes when the board reviews, your board, not this board, your board reviews it and says, this isn't in our favor.
And I don't have a problem going out to spills and checking rivers and whatever I need to do. I have no problem with that, but if my board tells me I can't do it, what do I do?
They need to request to change your job description, is what the auditor probably would say, or the HR department. So it doesn't come back on you.
Right now, it's coming back on you.
That's why I didn't wanna do this in open meeting.
Sure.
I didn't want this to become a.
I just say we just need to have her board review what they want her to do, then rewrite the form for the job description. Then we have to make a decision, do we want Michael to step up and do that?
How long is it till you have it, or your board meets you?
April.
For next month, probably, quarterly, right? If you would keep me reminded of that, and I'll attend that, to bring up this problem too. Try to do it a longer, get it solved. Because if it has to start.
I don't think, oh, one of these tests, they're, they're probably gonna show.
Well, it's not ammonia, it's not nitrogen, the dissolved oxygen levels are good. So the testing I can do, should, that's what that should, um, they did the dissolve oxygen with a meter, and I'm not gonna buy one, because they are very expensive. The ammonia and nitrogen kits aren't that expensive. We did take several water samples from different locations throughout the creek to send back, or creek, depending on where you're going. Uh, to send back to Indianapolis, and they said up to thirty days, so that's their decide, it's not mine or our. And I think, I think I went to the State Board of Health is where they sent it, so free, instead of paying hundreds of dollars or thousands of dollars for a chemical test. Depending on what you're looking for, you know, if you contract with a lab, it's gonna rack up in the cost. And so why not use the State Board of Health to have a free lab?
Well, this is State, I mean, this is State Board.
Yes, and I, right.
They're responsible for the lab.
I just wanna make things clear, and we're, we're wasn't pointing fingers, we're just gonna get it solved.
I would have a suggestion you might not consider, uh, as a board, uh, officially taking a vote to, uh, request the Board of Health to, uh, review and update, yeah, that job description, to make sure it's consistent with what.
They want her to.
Yes, yes.
Cause may, may as well, if you said, I'll help you right now.
So I'd entertain a motion in a sense.
That'd be my motion to have the, the health board review the job description.
With San, County Sanitary.
With County Sanitary. If they don't want her to do that, then.
Environmental Specialist.
Environmental Specialist.
Environmental Health Specialist, which type of title we're using there.
Who knows? Job description.
Just review and not make any recommendations.
Well, I mean, if they don't want her to do it, they need to change it. If not, she's bound by that job description. I mean, she can't disobey her boss, cause then they can get her for, say you're not providing, blah, blah, perhaps. So, I mean, she's, he's a catch twenty-two, she's a catch twenty-two.
This works been rise every day, so.
So that'd be my motion for their, for the health board to review her contract and write it to where they want her.
Our contract.
Or, or the contract for the personnel.
Angie, you have a comment on this? There was a question you wanted to make.
We just gotta get it straight until we don't come into the.
Again, I didn't wanna do this in open meeting, I wanted to do this in a closed session. Cause it, it sure looks like finger, yeah, I just need other information.
It shouldn't somebody else, or bill goes to the lead.
This could be other?
To, to avoid interference, you know, it's just.
Okay.
It's up to you, Warren, cause if it's during the day.
Oh, it won't be a.
It's a night board.
Be a night board.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have a favor.
Well, we'll find out what it is, you know.
If, if somebody is officially doing, I mean, I suggested the motion, I mean, have them make the recommendations review, I mean, maybe somebody doesn't even need to attend the review.
It is for you, it's for you.
Somebody's gonna have to get in and ask.
So I have a motion on the floor, all in favor of the motion, say.
Okay.
My, one final thing, my question comes down to, not only should the health department be there, but is it appropriate for you? Which toward your job description, I don't think it is.
No, but because nobody had been responding, I took it upon myself to be the county face at that time, cause I felt, even with the maneuver spills and that, there, there needs to be somebody there. And at the time, when it started, when I started going, nobody knew who's got it. I knew it wasn't mine, but we didn't know where it lay. And I think now they have just be, you know, I.D.M. and DNR, and then have just become accustomed to calling me. I think. I, I didn't get into a conversation with those guys when we were out there Wednesday. I wanted to see if we could find what the source was. We did run into a septic issue, uh, out there. Uh, is it the contaminant? No, we don't believe so, cause it's, it's further south, but it was tied into another tile that, but we don't. We know that it didn't go down to the stream, that portion, you know, that septic issue that we ran.
Mayor, come in.
I just have a question. Um, do we have conservation officers for the county? Don't they kinda represent the county, I mean, that are.
They represent the state, cause they're state employees.
But I mean, that they're stationed, or I mean, they're.
But I was out there with, the conservation officer Saturday night called me and said, hey, we gotta kill them. And I said, okay, we're at, they told me I went. Then while we were out there, the biologist asked them to count how many fish south, a hundred and twenty-five yards south of the culvert, a hundred and twenty-five yards north, and at the waterhead, for a hundred and twenty-five yards. So we had three, we even brought, they brought in the Cass County Conservation Officer to assist them with that. I was there to do the ammonia test and the nitrogen test, because they don't have those test kits with them. I.D.M. was, that I.D.M. was contacted, I even talked to them, they couldn't respond because their emergency response guy was tied up dealing with a, a larger spill in southern Indiana. Uh, then I had talked with that, he, the emergency response guy that was coming up, he said, hey, I'll be up Sunday morning. I said, oh, he goes, can you meet me out there? I was like, sure.
So was I.D.M. ever up yet?
Yes. I.D.M. showed up Sunday. Uh, we were out there for about five, six hours, I think. We're checking every possible spot that we could. Then we got to the point where we were just spinning our wheels, so between conservation, myself, and I.D.M., we came up with, hey, let's, he was going back to the state to talk to his bosses, I let you guys know what was going on via email. And then, uh, we decided that Wednesday we were gonna do this, they asked me to bring people in, and I, I did ask Angie to come in, and then I did get a, a phone message that showed, showed up the other day saying that she came out of her meeting and Dr. Dutter told her she was not allowed to go. So I don't fault anybody, you know, but we just need to know, if you guys don't want me to do it, I'll stop, but.
Well, I think if you're gonna do it, we need to review your job description too. Because it's not in there.
Well, we need to see what the Board of Health, you know, the, the, the boards are there.
Is a fish kill a disaster? And are you not in charge of disaster?
I'm in charge of all disasters, but when we had, when we started this whole discussion, I think it was November, December, when we were doing the maneuver thing, when it was brought up, uh, you know, sheriff was involved, Angie was involved, I was involved, the paper was here. The questions were asked, what's a disaster? Well, a maneuver spill is not a disaster. Is it a huge inconvenience? Yes. But could it become a disaster? Very probable it could become a disaster. You know, it's, it's a play of words, and it's sometimes, with it.